Dan Phillips of Grace Fellowship of Palatka. Also Representative Phillips, will you lead us in the pledge of time?
Thank you, sir.
Let's pray. Our Father, we are assembled here in this place because you have ordained government. And Father, the people of this city have been presented with a slate of candidates that said, "We want to serve you and want to represent you in this place." And so, Father, the people seated at the table tonight have committed themselves to lead this city, to grow, to prosper, to do, Father, to do the right thing. And so, we ask that you grant to each and every one in this room tonight a clear mind, a committed conscience for this city. Help us, Father, to seek those things that would benefit the citizens of this city so that we can be proud of where we live, encourage others to come and be a part of us, and that, Father, we can, with a heart of love and compassion as well as civic duty, meet the needs of each and every one that we can. So, Father, guide the proceedings in this meeting, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Borum?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Norwood?
Not yet, sir.
You have a warrant.
He won't be here tonight.
Oh, sorry. I think we need to include that they don't see the business when we aren't here, so people don't think we should.
He communicated.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Norwood is traveling to handle concerns of the city. Well, now, item number one on the agenda is our public recognition and presentations. We don't have any for tonight. Is there anything that the Commission needs to add? We will move on to approval of the minutes. There's a motion on floor to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to our public comment section. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Item number three on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A on the consent agenda is adopt resolution number 2015-1137, amending the regular meeting date of the CRA to the second Monday of each month at 5:00 p.m. B, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an test change order number four with your construction of North Florida LLC in the amount of $3,917.10 to add emergency exit and egress lighting associated with hangar improvements at the Palatka Municipal Airport, 100 percent grant funded. C, adopt resolution number 2015-11-39, awarding a bid to Next Tran Truck Center of Jacksonville in the amount of $289,257.25 for the purchase of a 2016 Mack MRU 633 refuse collection truck Hercules front loader with integrated compressed CNG tanks. D, adopt resolution number 2015-11-40, authorizing execution of a fireworks display contract in amount of $18,000 with fireworks by Santor for the Fourth of July display. E, adopt resolution number 2015-1141, authorizing the reimbursement of expenses associated with procuring police department vehicles with the general fund with taxes and financing proceeds. F, adopt resolution number 2015-1142, authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with NSCI for the purchase, installation, and support of Laserfish Documenting Engineering Management System software and services. G, reappoint Kristen Bowlen as PHA resident representative to the Palatka Housing Authority Board for a four-year term to expire April 14, 2019. H, recommend to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners to appoint Annie...
Svetlina.
Svetlina to the Putnam County Library Board for a three-year term to expire June 30 of 2018. Adopt resolution number 2015-11-43, authorizing application for a $1.5 million interest-free loan with a 20-year repayment term to fund wastewater treatment plant improvements, authorizing the mayor to request FDPE release of $75,000 previously approved funds to fund the design build of the wastewater treatment plant improvements per discussion and consensus provided at a 62415 workshop, and authorizing negotiations for design, build, and engineering consultant contract for said project. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed?
I would like to pull H just for a minute to take a statement.
Okay. Is there any other items?
Motion to approve.
I want to pull a aye, just so that we make sure we have everything in place. So, items number H and aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, sending agenda A through G.
Okay.
Pull H and aye.
Okay, there is a motion to approve. Second. There's a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, motion carries.
We just appointed a young lady to the board at the library. I don't think, she isn't here, I don't think, but I would like to remind her that she represents the city of Palatka and that when she goes into meetings, that she needs to look out for us. The reason I'm doing this is Brian Michaels, we did years ago for the library and put him on the library board and they moved the library out of town and put it out by the college. If things like that come up, the City Commission would like to know about it before they do it, so that if we have some reasons why we feel like it needs to be a little different, then the serious stuff like that, I'd like for her to make sure she has us in mind and it's done.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion on item number H? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion to approve, there's a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Any discussion?
Can we get that information off to her?
Yes.
Okay.
You know her, she works for the city.
Okay.
This is Annie Svetlina.
Okay. She needs to know that. She not here, I tell her myself.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor, question's going to be called. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item aye on the agenda, Mr., we're going to have a representative come up from BCR. Come up to the podium for me. Just state your name and address for the record.
Jim Christopher with BCR.
And Jim, we went over this last night. I think, just for the sake of the information, there was one thing, one piece that we actually included in this, in the consent agenda, and that was the financial aspect as it pertains to having Dave come on, Dave Kim come onboard with this project, and I think his fee would be associated with the $75,000 that would be initially brought in as a part of, that would be released from the application that we had before. And so, those were the things that we were looking at, and I wanted, just in case anyone from the Commission had any questions, I wanted you to come up, Jim. Jonathan, if you've got anything else you want to add, you can do so as well.
Jonathan Griffin, project manager. Yes, Mr. Reynolds and I, with the assistance of David Kemp, contacted the SVP rep regarding the loan program. We made some inquiries about deadlines. Again, we confirmed that we do need to get the loan documents in. He did notify us that we needed to submit a letter to get a few extra days to kind of get a pass on that deadline. We could, because we had some mitigating circumstances associated with the appropriation that we were requesting, but that's a moot point at this juncture. Related to Ayers and Associates, the city's position when it comes to these matters is to have a third-party consulting engineer, and Ayers has served as the master consulting engineer for the wastewater treatment plant, Dave, I believe, for almost six years now?
Just correct?
Yes. And you informed us earlier that $75,000 did include enough to, for the city to contract directly with Ayers for that third-party consultant and satisfy their design build contract for the planning phase.
What about for the subsequent phases?
The $1.5 million did include money for an engineer, yes.
And so, we can, and so, there is no objection as it relates to BCR from a contractual standpoint to have Ayers involved in the building phase of this project as well, correct?
Well, we spoke earlier and they said they wanted to have Ayers and Associates do the program management, the overseeing of the project, and that we would hire an external engineer to us to come in and approve the design plans and then Ayers would approve them.
Correct.
Our guys would do the planning, do the stamping of the design, and Ayers would approve them as your program manager.
Okay. Kemp, can you come forward for me? Thank you, Ms. Christopher.
David Kemp, Ayers Associates.
I just want to make sure that we, that we're clear on what scope is of services that will be provided for Ayers and to make sure that the city's interests are protected just as well in this project, and I want you to maybe give some input so that the Commission will be informed.
Okay. I think through the process of doing the cost evaluation, there's been discussions and group discussions previous to this regarding participation of Ayers Associates with BCR on the project. There's been discussion of, on the engineering side, with assisting on that, but also the city's, as Jonathan just mentioned, oversight to make sure that the city's interests are protected. So, my understanding is that's the way we're going to move forward on this, and in the construction phase, that's a different funded situation, so that would be a little bit different. But I think in looking at moving forward with the design and elements that have been discussed in the study that I did, as well as the design of the BCR, and the intent was to have that oversight.
Correct. So, I think we, and I think we satisfy the intent to the fullest based upon the scope of what we've got in front of us today. Any other questions, Commissioner?
Well, I just, one thing, what we wanted to add in the contract to make sure that we don't exceed the 1.45 or whatever.
The terms of the contract.
The terms of the contract.
They'll be set forth in a separate group bill.
That'll be in the contract.
Correct.
So, do you need a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Christopher. We now move on to our agenda number four, item number four on the agenda, which is our CRA Business Resolution, amending fiscal year 2014-15 CRA 10 budget to include Southern Riverfront Festival infrastructure improvements. Ms. Christopher.
A resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending the central business increment fund budget for fiscal year 2014-2015 to facilitate the riverfront infrastructure improvements.
There's a motion to approve on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded by Commissioner Ford. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, we enter into our public hearing at this time. Item number five on the agenda is an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Election Section 26-5 to amend to the residence requirement for qualification from one year to six months prior to qualification, second reading. Ms. Christopher.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Palatka to amend Section 26-5 qualifying for offices, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Second. Motion on the floor, a second. Moving on to the floor for public comment, for public here. Is anyone here for public here? Seeing no one here, we'll close our public here. Call the question, roll call, please.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Orton, Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5040.
May I think we need to make sure that our supervisory relation come visit, other than just these few meetings today, enjoy.
Moving on now, item number six on the agenda, resolution authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement with the city of Jacksonville, Florida, approving the city of Jacksonville's issuance of a tax-exempt healthcare facilities revenue bond to Genesis Health Incorporated, a foreign nonprofit corporation, to finance the acquisition and the cost of construction, installation, and equipment, and equipping a healthcare facility, Brooks Rehabilitation, which is located in Palatka, Florida. Mr. Holmes, and we also have representatives from Rogers Towers, present?
Well, I would defer to them, but we were contacted by representatives of Rogers Towers and advised that it was necessary that, in order for this particular bond issue to be issued or to be let, that the resolution be passed by effective municipalities, which would include the city of Palatka because it involved a facility that's located here. I was assured that the city would not take on any liability to pay the bonds, that the bonds would not be shown as a city liability, so it would negatively affect our credit rating, and that in the event there were some issue or event of default, the city would not be held responsible for payment of the bonds. If all that's accurate and we're reassured about that, then it would seem there's no downside to the city of Palatka, and it would involve the acquisition of, I believe it's the acquisition of a local facility, I don't think they're building another one, but I think it involves the acquisition of a local facility by a bigger group that might assure or help assure the continued existence of our local facility because of the assets and market position of the larger group, and so there'd be some upside and no downside. That's the way it was presented to me, and I asked that representatives of Rogers Towers be here to personally assure the Commission of that, so it would not be simply me laying that information.
Attorney Smith, we're here, the representative, would you like to come forward at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Tito Smith, I'm attorney from Palatka, now with the law firm of Rogers Towers.
Stairs in there. Just take your address for us, please.
Tito Smith, my primary address is 131 Kelly Smith Ranch Road, Palatka, Florida, I'm here tonight, I'd like to introduce one of the partners in the law firm, Mr. Urban Weinstein, and he will speak to the issues involved here, and also we have with us Mr. Jimmy Harrison, who is the vice president with Brooks Rehab, and Dave can speak much more eloquently and knowledgeably on this than can I, so I'll let him take it. Welcome.
Can you tell me where it is? It's already here, right?
Yes, ma'am. We can give you the address. Ziegler Road.
Ziegler Drive.
Ziegler Drive, sir. I'm Urban Weinstein with Rogers Towers, 1301 River Place Boulevard in Jacksonville. Mr. Mayor, just as a formality, so that we can satisfy the federal tax code, I just want to make sure that the public hearing is open. If anyone wants to speak during the public hearing, then they can, but we just need to make sure there is a public hearing.
It is, it will be.
And I just need to make sure the caption and somebody makes a motion, a second.
We'll do it, you can, go ahead and read the caption now, so we can get that out of the way.
A resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, approving the execution of an interlocal agreement with the city of Jacksonville, Florida, the issuer, approving the issuance by the issuer of its healthcare facilities revenue bonds, Brooks rehabilitation, and one or more tax exempt or taxable series, and an aggregate principal not to exceed $130 million to finance, reimburse, or refinance the costs of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain healthcare facilities to be located within the jurisdiction of the city of Palatka, Florida, and other healthcare facilities located outside the city of Palatka, Florida, of which not to exceed $3,500,000, will be issued for the purpose of providing funds to make a loan to Genesis Health Incorporated, a Florida not-for-profit corporation, to finance, reimburse, or refinance a portion of the cost of the construction, installation, and equipping of such healthcare facilities to be located in the city of Palatka, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I confirm what your lawyer has indicated, that this would not involve the debt of the city in any way or obligate the city in any way. As a matter of fact, it doesn't even obligate the city of Jacksonville, it's going to issue the bonds, except for the money the city receives from Genesis Health, Brooks Rehabilitation, and that's a requirement of the law, so there is no way that the city's credit would be implicated for this, and the bonds would be issued by the city of Jacksonville, not the city of Palatka, but the federal tax code requires that if any bond money is being spent in other jurisdictions beyond Jacksonville, then those other jurisdictions need a public hearing, and an elected body needs to approve the issuance of the bonds, and so that's one reason we're here, and the law requires that there be an interlocal agreement between the issuing body, and in this case, the city. What this involves is Brooks Rehabilitation buying the assets of Americare Home Therapy, which is a home healthcare organization, and it's located in various places, but its home office is in Palatka, and the primary asset that Brooks is acquiring is the license, and so for tax purposes, we have to allocate a portion of that acquisition price to the city, so that's really the background in terms of why we're here from a legal perspective. But Jimmy Harrison can respond to any specific questions about the business plan or anything else, anything you have.
Thank you, Counsel. Harrison.
Jim Harrison, University Boulevard, Jacksonville.
You're welcome.
So, as Mr. Weinstein mentioned, we are in the middle of an acquisition of Americare Home Therapy. It is a for-profit home health agency. Its headquarters is in Jacksonville. However, in the state of Florida, the state is divided into several districts when it comes to healthcare. Jacksonville's considered District Four, and then the biggest district in the entire state is District Three, and our headquarters for District Three is located here in Palatka. And so, this has been our hub for all of the spokes. It's for Gainesville, Lake City, Ocala, all of that is done out of the Palatka office over off of Ziegler Drive.
Are you seeking to continue that operation?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions from the Commission?
I'm just trying to figure out in my head where it is.
How about the hospital?
Yeah.
Spider Cross from the hospital, right?
We've got to be dressed.
Okay, I know. It's nice to have something to stay in here for a while and people not taking stuff away from us.
How many million dollars was that bond issued?
It could go up to 130 million.
Oh, indeed, about 1.5 for a new water plant.
Now, that 130 includes some potential refunding or refinancing, and whether or not the refinancing takes place is really a question of what the market is at the time the bonds are priced, so it may well not be anything approaching 130 if the market moves away from us.
Any other concerns? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion, a second on the floor. We will now open up the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak during our public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing at this time. Question will be called, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We will now move into item number seven on the agenda, staff request for direction of God's appraisal report for the city of Palatka, adopted comprehensive plan 2015 updated and processed and scheduled. Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, bad for a plan director. I'll make this brief. Simply put, our comprehensive plan has expired, and we do have the ability to just not update it or update it, and I am requesting that you consider updating it. We've done a lot of work in the past, back in 2011, some of you, you were on the Commission, Commissioner Brown, remember that work, workshops and shreets, and we have, I think, a good start on this, and obviously, you need to take through the process, and get your input, and make sure it's your plan, and you have ownership, but I'm recommending that you direct staff to proceed with continuing the work of updating the comprehensive plan, taking up where we left off. It will be a year-long process, we will take it to the planning board, and all appropriate public hearings, and end up before you. Have to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I think it's something we should really continue to do, because you all are new here and you have new ideas and things, and times change, and if we don't put good stuff in place, then, and do some of the changes, and correct some of the stuff that needs to be corrected, then we're stranded. And I think with all the new minds here, that we'll have a lot more come involved if we go forward and work on this.
Any other comments?
I think that the update of the comprehensive plan is right along the lines of what we spoke about in the visiting section, and getting to a point where we actually implement a full-scale strategic plan, which includes the five-year plan as well for the city of Palatka, which becomes an ever-moving document. So, I think the time is ripe, and I support wholeheartedly our movement towards updating this plan.
Does that send it out of the board? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Item number eight on the agenda, staff recommendation to accept the proposal from American Data Group, ADG, to merge the city of Palatka's utility billing database with the Palatka Gas Authority's utility dating base. Matt Riddelich, you're up.
Finance Director, Matt Riddelich. City staff has kind of been looking at different ways that the city may be able to reduce costs by consolidating services, merging services wherever we can, and this is one area that I believe would save the city, could be a significant amount of money. The cost to, estimated cost to merge our database into the Palatka Gas Authority's database is 12,400. Of course, that cost will be split, but in the bigger picture is, if we merge with the gas authority, we can really see some cost savings, things like postage, preparation and mailing of the utility bills, and in my opinion, it just makes sense to merge those services. Gas authorities sending out postcard bills for gas, they look exactly like a postcard. We're sending out for water, sewer, and garbage, so it kind of just makes sense that those should be merged together. I estimated the savings in the first year on just operating costs of 17,500, that there could be more savings once we get further into the process and determine if maybe some of our staff could be repurposed to other areas, whether it be in the water fund, or say, in the general fund, or other positions that we may have open. So, this is kind of just the beginning, but just wanted to bring this in front of the Commission, that it didn't really exceed procurement policy standards that set forth by the city, and just wanted to make the City Commission aware of what's going on, and we're working with the gas authority to hopefully get this implemented so we can start October 1 of the new fiscal year.
I have a question. How are we going to educate folks if we change over to the changes? You know, we always have a hard time sometimes with folks understanding, and some people have a yes and no feeling, and some people don't. have a yes and no feeling, some people don't. So we're looking at, make sure you're in the planning of how we are going to get people to understand what, what's being done and why.
Well, we talk. Go ahead, go ahead.
Part of, of what we're going to do now is because we don't have a lot of room on our postcards when we send out postcards now, so we, we can't really send out any more information on those postcards. What we're looking at doing when we make this change is going to a full letter-sized bill with a return envelope and, and utilizing a company that, that does that. What we can do by doing that is we have a lot more leeway in including a lot of other information. We can include flyers in our utility bills for events that may be occurring or any information that we want the community to know about, and by, by doing it this way, the postage will cost more for a full-size letter, however, the, the savings by merging, and we don't really know exactly how many yet, I'm guessing 2,500, maybe 3,000 utility bills a month. You know, we're both paying postage now, so when we combine overall, the, the net is, should be a decrease in postage, so it'll allow us to, to do things like that. And when we were thinking about this process, it, it made more sense to combine ours with Palatka Gas Authority due to that new building that they built. It's really kind of designed to take payments, they've got a drive-through window, they've got a vacuum system kind of like a bank, so it, it made sense to us instead of, you know, trying to retrofit City Hall to be more acceptable to taking payments like that to, to merge with the Gas Authority.
And then the second benefit is it also allows us to be able to, to have more administrative staff for the purposes, and those are some of the areas where we have deficiencies at this point. We can start to cross-train, and I had an interesting conversation with Don Kitter today, it gives the opportunity to cross-train, to have both the individuals in the Gas Authority as well as our, our current staff with water, to be able to handle both, both sides of the issues relates to customer service, and I think it gives us a better efficiency of operations. And so that's, we're really trying to streamline processes to make sure that we get the most benefit out of the staff that we have in place at this point.
Commission has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and like I said, I'm going to be bringing back more information as we work through the process with the Gas Authority.
And so we've, we've heard staff recommendations, are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. There's a motion to approve staff recommendation by Vice Mayor Brown, the second by Commissioner Borum. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now move on to our administrative reports. Mr. Crowe, do you have anything for us? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed. Weinstein, that was his card. We've got, Chief, do you have anything?
James Christopher, there are two, please. Just wanted to say thanks to the commission, Mayor, everybody that showed up for the Black Pride cleanup last weekend, real well, we had a good time, I think we had about 77 people signed up, and including a bunch of football players from high school and some other kids, it's turned out real well, so thank you.
Thank you. Chief member. Supervisor, you have anything for us today?
Sir.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Borum?
Nothing today.
Vice Mayor Brown?
I'd like for us to, in all of a sudden, maybe to start our business incubator, and then have, I guess, get to, or getting somebody to make some calls and get us going on it. We wait to all this.
All this. So we will set another, run another workshop or?
Whatever y'all want to do to get it started.
Let's go back with the, go back with the meeting that, the meeting that you were holding at the Price Martin, probably be it.
We don't, I don't, we can have an open meeting for everybody at Price, but I don't care, we need to, we need to get it started, because I feel like it will help us to get some businesses in the downtown and train some people to help do some of theirs, and also bring in that youth group, they training both our six houses and other stuff over there. I talked to them when they opened up, and they said they'd like to be a part of it, so we probably could get a youth training section in there that our youth could learn how to start their businesses and.
And that's the Florida Foundation, and I'll kind of give you an update on that as well. I spoke with them earlier last week, at the end of last week, I went over, they have a class of five young ladies that are graduating this week, I want to say, and they've been doing an excellent job, and they're willing to partner with the city because they have to get, they have to have certain projects in place so they can get their certification, and so I, I think there's an opportunity, if, if we're, we're so inclined to move forward in that direction, to partner with them so that, and they can help us with some of the projects that we have in place. They have to be licensed and framing and painting, electrical, landscaping, so we've got, I think, eleven core areas of service, and they want to partner with the city so that they can work on some projects that we have in order to get certification, and I think it creates an, an opportunity for us to be able to have some of our young people become involved, which may lead to some employment opportunities for them as well. And so I, I know with the, the challenges that we have from agenda perspective, especially as it relates to facility maintenance, streets, and some of the other departments, having, you know, some young folks who are certified, it gives us an opportunity to look at creating some diversity within the workforce there as well. So, I want to thank you. Commissioner Campbell, you have anything?
Yes, just a few quick things. I know that in our business visioning session that we had, we were trying to get through the water plant workshop, but I want to make sure that if we can immediately go forth with trying to hold some kind of workshop or some kind of meeting with regards to our cemetery and the conversation that we had in depth with that, I think that'll be one of the things that help us move forward. And also want to publicly thank the police department, Black Forest Police Department, for hosting an event with the Boys the Man Mentor Group on last Friday, we had an awesome time. I think the mentors enjoyed it a little bit more than the, the mentees, but thank you for your ongoing relationship and partnership with the Boys the Man mentorship program.
And I, and just to piggyback off of your conversation about the cemeteries, I've had a kind of gone around and polled some of our, our morticians within the area, and they're extremely interested in coming forward and helping us move, and move forward with our cemeteries to deal with some of the concerns we have as it relates to facilities and also maintenance. And so I, I think it's, it's a wonderful time for us to come in and mobilize the citizens, especially those individuals who have significantly more expertise than I do in that area, and so that we can, we can start to provide the quality services necessary for, for our citizens, especially during their time of retirement. And so we're, we're looking to do that. I, I think that if, that's if we can, let's look at the, the second week of July as an opportunity to come in and mobilize the cemetery advisory committee, give them an opportunity to be our new city manager, and then we can start working on really a, a short-term plan in order to streamline some processes and deal with some of the, some of the issues that you have as well.
One last thing, there.
Yes, sir.
I think we forgot to mention that we're, we're having the Boys the Man mentoring group over in Crescent City this weekend, we're going to be hosting a cookout as well as a little bit of fishing, fishing fun over there in Crescent City, so if anybody would like to come out and assist in that process, we'll greatly appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, I thought they were trying to clear up a little schedule for July so we could have a break.
You, you're the, you're the funeral home director, you're the, you're the.
That's what I asked, why?
Your funeral home's a, your funeral home's a year, 100 years old this year, you're the expert, so we'll, we'll give you a break after that meeting. But I think time is of essence with that, so I, I really want to move forward with that so that we can, so that we can continue to provide some, make that aesthetic change that you, that you envision with the Black Pride project. So with that segue, I, I will not give a report because I've given one to everybody else's report, and if there are motions to return.
No.